Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 11th Board of County Commissioner meeting. Ms. Loretta Dozier, one of my most favorite people. If you could just step up here and do an invocation.
Happy New Year. Let's pray. Father, we just come before you in the name of Jesus, and we thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, who died on the cross, who was buried, and you raised him from the dead on the third day. We thank you for our county commissioners, Lord. We thank you for their service. We thank you for this new year. We thank you that we have the freedom to open up this, this meeting in prayer, you know, acknowledging you first. Thank you for their, their, the years of service that the commissioners have served here in Brevard County and serving the citizens. Father, we pray for and thank you for Commissioner Zanka. We thank you for Commissioner Pritchett. We thank you for Commissioner Smith. We thank you for Commissioner Tabaya. We thank you for Commissioner Lober. We thank you for County Attorney Ms. Jaronby, and we thank you for County Manager Abate. Father, just bless them, bless their families, bless their children, bless their grandchildren, even bless their staff. Now, we ask just for wisdom for them, integrity. We thank you for integrity. We thank you for humility. We thank you that you would guide this meeting and guide their hearts. Your word says, "If any man lacks wisdom, let him ask of God, and you will give to him liberally, and upbraided not." So, we thank you that they will acknowledge you during this meeting this evening, Lord. They don't know what decisions to make and how to vote, and we just ask that they would whisper a prayer to you. You said, "If you call unto me, you will, they, you will answer," and you will do great and mighty things that they know is not. So, we thank you for the wisdom of God tonight. We just thank you for all that you're doing. May this meeting, this fir, this meeting in this new year set the tone for the rest of the meetings throughout the year. May it be peaceable and respectful, Lord, and just warm and acknowledging one another in love. We thank you, we love you, we adore you, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Very inspiring, Ms. Dozier. Thank you. And with that, I'll call this meeting to order. Commissioner Tabaya?
Please stand and join me in the pledge.
Aye. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have no minutes for approval. No resolutions or words of presentation, so we'll move on to consent. Does the commission have anything they want removed?
F8, Madam Chair.
F8?
Please.
Okay. Can you make a motion to approve the rest of the agenda with the exception of F8?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lober. Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Lober?
Appreciate it, Madam Chair. So, F8, taking a look at this. It's clear that a portion of this, in fact, a substantial portion of what's being requested is reasonable. I have a concern with another portion that really doesn't strike me as reasonable, though. I have driven for the county, out of county, a number of times. I have never billed for a hotel room, not that I'm saying that there aren't circumstances in which doing that might be appropriate or allowable. However, looking at this, this is a two-day conference or a two-day event, and it looks like there's a request noting again that this is in Kissimmee, which is roughly 60 miles, it looks to be, one way. So, figure an hour and a quarter, an hour and a half, max. I used to work in Kissimmee, so I think it's a pretty good estimate. To have two nights of a hotel and two dinners for a two-day event doesn't make sense. It means that when the event ends on the second night, not only are you staying the first night, but you're, you're staying there the first night, the event ends the second night, you're hanging out, getting dinner on the taxpayer's dime, and then going to sleep at the hotel instead of coming back for an hour drive. It, it just doesn't make sense to me. I'm comfortable with the $4.25 registration fee. I'm comfortable with not just the $70.56 that was put in for mileage, but I'm comfortable with double that because frankly, they should be driving both days. So, the 70.26 times two is 141.12. I'm comfortable with the tolls, $28 for two days, times two is $56. That's not an issue. As far as the parking fee, I'm fine with the parking fee at $40. I'm sure it's not going to be any more because they've charged or they sought to have approved both days. It looks to be in the ballpark of $480 or so dollars in terms of those expenses, but I would move to approve the $4.25 registration fee. I would move to approve double the mileage requested, so 70.56 times two, presuming they drive both days. I'd be fine with the tolls at $28, times two, so $56 for that. I have no issue with them getting lunch both days at the requested rate for, it looks like, another $22, but I, I just don't think they need to hang out and eat on the taxpayer's dime. So, I would move to approve those particular items and deny the requests as to the others.
We have someone from Court Administration here if you have any questions.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Mark Van Bever. I'm the administrator for the courts in Brevard County, and I can speak to the hotel stay or any other questions that you have. Would you like me to speak to the hotel?
Sure. And I guess really what, what troubles me the most about it is, looking at the documents, it just appears to me that even after this ends, that the intention's to hang out, have dinner on the taxpayer, and then go back to the hotel, go to sleep, and then get up bright and early and come on back. So, if that's not the case, I'd love to know.
Okay. The case is because of the I-4 and 192 traffic, the, the person would go the night before because the training starts at 8:00 the next morning, and then stay the first night for the second day of training, and when the training was over, come home. So, it is two nights in a, in a hotel, but it would be the night before so they don't have that drive-in before the training, and then the night of the, of the first training day. So, it would be two nights, but on the front end and the middle, not the middle and the end.
I, I don't want to dox this person, but can you tell us whether they live in the northern or central or southern part of the county?
I believe it's the central.
Because I, I've never taken I-4 going into Kissimmee from here. I've always taken 192, and I, you know, maybe I drive five or six miles an hour, more than I should, or faster than I should, but it's, it's never taken me so long that even for programs starting at 8:00 in the morning, if that's when it starts, it's been a problem. If the commission wants to approve one night for hotel between the two days, I'll, I'll live with it, but it just seems like it's a bit much.
Okay. I understand. A couple of things. That is that we're not requesting additional funding, that we have, we have a budget that you've approved, and we're just requesting that we use that funding in this way because when we submitted our budget request, we didn't specify or detail that this travel would take place. And so, we felt it to be prudent to let you know how we wanted to spend our, spend the budget by including the, the hotel stay. It is your decision. I understand that it, it is drivable. The, the net cost is not, as you mentioned, it would, there would be another $70 for mileage if, if the person does the commute both days. And we, we do recognize that it's your decision and that it's to, it's to make the, the, make the training easier for the traveler.
And I appreciate that. And maybe, you know, maybe folks have a different opinion, but I've, I've driven to Groveland and back. I've driven far further than this and back in the same day without it even occurring to me to spend the night. So, I, I don't know where folks are, but, you know, the motion that I made stands. If you all want me to modify it to include one night of, of hotel, I'll be happy to do that, too, but I, I just think two nights is still too much.
And, and one more thing, we were able to, able to get a fee waiver, so the $425 for the fee has been waived because of the position of the person traveling.
Oh, that's good to know. I appreciate that.
Just, just, since it's early in the morning, you know, I, I don't know. It depends on how people are confident driving during the middle of the night or whatever. So, Commissioner Lober, if it's like right before 1:00, I'm probably okay at the hotel, but you did bring up a good point because it's only one night of dinner, so you cut off one of the dinners. So, coming back, if, if that's a save for you, because then they're going to get there late at night, so they will have already had dinner, so they can get dinner the next night. But I'm, I'm probably fine with it. And if you got it waived as well. Just typically, we don't see these. Is, is it because you guys didn't get them in time for the budget, or, because we usually don't see these individually, that's making it kind of tough on you right now?
Right. Well, we didn't anticipate this specific travel to occur. This is related to family division judges. It's the, it's a very important update on family law.
All right.
And we didn't request it specifically in the budget, and rather than just spend the money, we thought it was prudent to make sure you were okay if we spent it that way.
Okay. So, Commissioner Lober, I don't know what y'all want to do, but, but it would be in me. If I had to be on the road at a nighttime, I, I would prefer to get locked into a place safely before I hadn't attended a seminar. So, just a thought on that. Your guys are a little different, but...
And I'm okay with it, too. I understand if the training starts at 8:00 a.m., I know how those training sessions typically go, and they're all day long, and that's a lot. I think it's not a matter of, you know, just convenience. It's not like it's a 15-minute drive. So, I think, I think it's a good use, and I appreciate you getting the fee waived. I think that's pretty incredible that you're saving $400 out of your budget to do that. So, I have no problem with your travel request. It's not unreasonable, and it's not unlike anything else as far as other training goes within the county. So, I'm okay with it the way it stands.
Commissioner Lober?
Madam Chair, just a, a quick question for Commissioner Pritchett, because it sounds like...
Don't ask me my age.
I promise I won't do that, at least not tonight. It sounds like you're good with it shy of one of the, one of the two dinners.
Well, because you brought that up.
I appreciate that.
You talked about those themselves.
So, if, if it doesn't go the way that I've suggested, whoever makes the motion, I certainly think that's better than nothing.
I think it's nitpicking if you're worried about it. Yeah, okay.
I'll go ahead and withdraw my motion to make it cleaner.
You want to make a motion?
Okay. Make a motion to approve it.
I'll make a, I'll second that as it stands.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to approve the way the agenda item stands. I seconded it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1. All right. Moving on to public comments. I have two cards. And after Charles, it'll be Sandra Sullivan.
Not a snack, bird. Yay. Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. Could entertain me and look at this. From one of my rehab areas in the environment, that's micro marine life construction, and it's all falling apart because of the type of materials been used, then it's not good for the nature. Anyways, falls apart. Said my name already. Mask. Do you think that we're passing the virus through our mask? Because mask guards supposed to keep the virus in us and also prevent it from exposing other people. Now, if we catch the virus on our mask and unmanage, just lay our mask here, lay our mask there, and unconsciously, we're spreading the disease if we've contracted it somewhere. Eddie Rick and Barker, one of his slogans was, "He was saved to serve." I've been through several death situations. Anyways, Canova Beach, there's a, every time I go there, there's a possible accident. If they could put a one-way sign where the do not enter sign that's faded out, would, it might save, especially with the population and things nowadays. Halfway done with the property, giving you the, should maybe by the end of this week, and then we'll do the construction or whatever on the rest of the house and stuff. I do, from Canova Beach, I'll galley all the way to the county line as far as recovery and the lagoon, which nobody's interested in. You might think I'm crazy or whatever, but once you see what I have to reveal, and I'm working on finalizing everything. Also, the guy hadn't sent you a copy of his letterhead by now. His child had to be airlifted to the hospital, and I didn't want to interrupt him and things, but I'll contact him this week, and they're donating their time and materials, so I can't be too pushy on things. And that's part of my problem, is that I have to cooperate with everybody else as well since I have nothing left. And I'm a little bit behind. I do have a thing for the Brazilian pepper, a positive productive thing, and that's what I try and look at, everything, how bad or how, I try and look at good things and everything, no matter how terrible the situation is. And I'll keep you, have photographs about my property, and I'll email them or get them to you somehow soon. Working on everything, and I hope you had a happy holidays and didn't want to bother you or ruin your vacations or anything. Thank you, and have a nice, safe night.
Thank you, Mr. Tovey. Sandra? And after Sandra, it'll be Michael Dagan.
Good afternoon. Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. While the development of the luxury Weston Hotel is great news for Cocoa Beach, replacing the International Palms Resort, why is there a lack of transparency with Brevard County with the proposal to pay $80 million to build a convention center and parking garage for this hotel? The proposal from Commissioner Lober to the board was not in the details for the April 2021 meeting. A records request of the presentation done by the lobbyist to Commissioner Smith came back, no records found. Finally, the TDC meeting discussing this was eight days after the commissioner meeting. In my opinion, this should have gone to TDC first, and a TDC board member had to push hard to put this on that agenda. According to the commissioner's comments, you didn't even have a copy of the 19-page document until the morning of the 9:00 a.m. meeting, and comments were made by board members that not enough time for due diligence. The developer was rush, 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 and the county responded with moving ahead with bidding before the Johnson study was ready. The meeting, that, the RFP meeting with the tourism, Director Cranis said, "Conventions are lost leaders, don't make money." He said, "The funding with tourism dollars is an issue in a down economy. TDC dollars are the first to go," and expressed concern whether the taxpayers would be on the hook. "We're entering an inflationary period, and a recession may be very luckily." The RFP was to evaluate the Johnson report, which was expected the next week. That was May in, in 2021. We're now eight months later, and the county still doesn't have the report, hence the contract expired December 31st. This business entity has not even been able to keep its deliverables for a report, yet again is pushing for action now. The bottom line is what was stated in the RFP is not a good deal in a free-market economy, capitalism. Driftwood is here already. Why is Brevard even evaluating picking winners and losers? This is not fair to the other stakeholders of hotels. That deal eight months ago is not a good deal for Brevard. Now, they have removed the profit-making parking garage, reduced the size of the business center to 20,000 square feet. Ownership has changed. The risk to the county has increased on the downside. Thus, the only legal analysis was done. It is with hope that the county commissioners will not authorize a new agreement with Driftwood Stud, with the Driftwood Study. Thank you. And I just want to show, this is the proposal that was, the presentation that was done. I did get a copy of it from the TDC, and this was a copy of the letter that went out to all of you that was not in the commission meeting details. Thank you.
All right. Michael Dagan? Hi. Could you state your name and where you live?
Hi, I'm Michael Dagan. I'm a Merritt Island resident. Today, I spoke to Commissioner Lober regarding the Merritt Island Airport. I don't know if this commissioners are, are aware that the Merritt Island Airport is the third busiest airport in Florida. Not non-towered airport, all airports, not including, obviously, Fort Lauderdale, Orlando, and Jacksonville, and Tampa, but smaller airports. Third busiest. They fly from 7:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night, and it's mostly one flight school that has foreign flyers that come in and that are going nonstop. And we have a report that we did, that we did for Tyco for October to middle December, showing not, not only the heights that they're flying, but the dangers that they're flying out. We did give a letter to Mr., excuse me, to Commissioner Lober from the FAA, that the FAA says that they will enforce any laws that are brought about by the local government, in this case, Brevard County, since Merritt Island is unincorporated. I would like to bring forward, and when it's possible, to be able to require that all flight schools work at towered airports. Towered airports control the flight schools, make sure that they fly at, fly at proper levels and at proper times. There's nothing worse than 6:00 a.m. in the morning on a Sunday morning that a plane is 200 feet above your head. Our other concern is the following. This is a non-towered airport, which means these planes can do whatever they want, and no one can stop them. Right now, we're very blessed that we're having a new company, a new satellite company coming to the area. We're launching one to two rockets a week, and our cruise industry had seven cruise ships in just the other day. Not a full capacity, but when you add everybody up, it's around 35,000 people there. Nothing can stop these planes at any point from going to those areas. Nothing. Patrick Air Force Base will tell you flat out if you contact them. Space Force will tell you. All they can do is watch a train coming at them. If it was at a towered airport, they would be able to control, see where they're going, and see their flight plans. So, we are bringing this up with Tyco. We are bringing this up with FAA. We brought it to Commissioner Lober, and I know that the county attorney is looking at it, but we'd appreciate the opportunity to bring upon something that would require that all flight schools must work at towered airports. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's it for public comment.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Lober?
Just a, a couple of brief comments. First is to Ms. Sullivan. I don't want to rehash because it would take frankly, half an hour to do so, what I've, what I've already discussed at public meetings and as recently as earlier this afternoon on Space Coast Daily. If, if folks want to watch, there's a 20 or 25-minute interview on there that's right on their website that gets across my position with respect to a lot of the concerns that were raised. As to Mr. Dagan's comments, as I advised him prior to the meeting, my office has been in communication with the county attorney's office. I know that Abby was sent earlier today, a copy of a document that the gentleman actually just provided me prior to this meeting, a hard copy of, to review. Depending on what she determines in terms of what level of authority, if any, we have to address those concerns, I have no problem going to Tyco to determine if they have the same, the same view, a different view, or no, no opinion whatsoever, and then bringing it back here to see what, if anything, we want to do. But just in, in the few minutes I've had to scan the document that was provided, and I'm not saying that the gentleman's incorrect at all, I, I just have to take note that there are a few phrases that do cause me concern. On one of the pages, and I'll, I'll give this to the clerks afterwards so they can include it in the minutes, it says, "As long as the pilot or student is operating in a safe manner, they're within their rights to operate at the airport and the surrounding area. They cannot be restricted from using the airport or conducting training operations in the surrounding area." Next page has a line, and I'm, I'm not reading all of it, it's just simply too long at this point in the meeting, but next page has a section which reads, "The airport," pardon me, "the airspace belongs to the federal government and cannot be governed by local authorities." However, it does appear later on, it talks about the local zoning regulations potentially applying and land use ordinances applying. So, it, it may be something where we have an ability to do something. I, I just don't know, and it's something that's so niche and specific, I would hesitate to do anything until we have all of our ducks in a row. I, I just wanted to point those two things out. If we do have the ability to do something, though, after I get Tyco's feedback, I'll bring it back and see if there's some desire to, to look at it here.
Have a good day. So, yes, earlier Fritz sent me the letter, I believe it's from 2012, if I'm correct. Okay. So, we're looking at the same letter. So, just briefly looking at some case law, I did see some preemption. Clearly, we're preempted as far as the federal airspace, and, and that goes to the federal government, and that could be a serious issue, the supremacy clause under the Constitution, if we did pass an ordinance. Typically, the times flights are taking place, whether at night, city ordinances have been reversed by the court. are taking place, whether at night, city ordinances have been reversed by the courts, but I would seek direction from the board before, you know, if you want me to continue to look at it. I just looked at that letter because it was sent to me regarding this, and I just looked at it briefly, but if you want something more detailed, I would seek the board's direction on that.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was at the last Tyco board, and this gentleman was there, and somebody from the flight school was there, and the Tyco board said that they were going to look into this issue, so I have every expectation that they will. And the flight school guys seemed to be cooperative. I can't give you any more details, but that was the general gist of the conversation, just to bring you up to date.
Commissioner Pritchett?
First I've heard of a concern like this, so it's kind of a new thought to me, but we've had the Bristol Academy up at Tyco, and it's been a very good program, trained a lot of pilots. So I'm going to be a little more hesitant on this. I guess something that gets my attention otherwise of why we have concerns now, so.
And I've not gotten any feedback at all about this. It's a first complaint by one individual, so I would just caution, you know. And I appreciate you going to Tyco board to find out what their thoughts are on it, but I've never heard of any complaints before today. Commissioner Lober?
If you all want, and I don't need to vote on it, it's just really, let me know where you all are at. I'm happy at this point, if you want me to reach out to Tyco's legal counsel and just say, hey, do y'all have an informal opinion you can give me as to whether there's anything that can be done? And if the answer is no, then maybe the answer is no.
Or maybe what kind of feedback that that board has gotten up until today, because if we've never heard anything and their board isn't screaming, and I would just hesitate for this board to even put any time or effort into looking into changing something by the complaint of one individual. So that would just be, I would caution that.
I'll put out there as well, Madam Chair, my office has from time to time gotten other complaints, so I don't want it to appear as though it's literally one person. I'm not going to say that this has been the biggest issue by volume in my office. It's not. It's one of the smallest issues by volume, but it's not one person. So if you all would prefer, I'm happy to reach out to Tyco's board and order their legal counsel and just try to get something of a better understanding in terms of what research they've done and furtherance of what Commissioner Smith had mentioned.
Commissioner Smith?
I would just say that I think what you're offering is very generous, but I think you could probably do the same just by making a phone call to John Craig, who's the chair of that board, and he can fill you in on whatever information.
I'm fine doing that, too. Yeah. You know, let's start there.
That might save you some time.
I'll start there, and then depending on what I hear, I'll come back and see if maybe there's something else that is or isn't appropriate to pursue. Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to item H1. Ted?
Good evening, Commissioners. Item H1 is a request for the board to conduct a public hearing to consider an amendment to an existing binding development plan in medium-density, multifamily residential zoning classification for DeRosa Holding LLC. It's application 21PZ00059 for tax account number 2534267 in District 2. This item went to the December 2nd board meeting and was tabled to this meeting. There was a concern about, excuse me, removing the binding development plan with the limitation of 13 units and how the rest of the lots would be developed out. Well, the zoning classification only allows for 12 units to the acre, so when you look at the acreage of each of the six individual lots, it limits them to two units to the acre, except for the one northern lot, which would be three units, which is how they came up with the 13 units. So there's a provision by our code that limits the density on each lot.
Commissioner?
Yeah, in the interest of keeping this meeting going as well as it started, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion to approve it. I appreciate Mr. Moya having agreed to table this to this particular meeting. I was not in a position where I could have supported this before, but having had a chance to go over some of those concerns with staff, I'm happy with it.
Do you have any comments? Does the commission have any? Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Lober for approval, and a second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And item H2, I believe, is going to be tabled?
Yeah, actually, we're going to pull that item for tonight's public hearing, H2. It needed to be advertised in the paper, and so only one public hearing is necessary. It is scheduled for January 25th, and we'd like the board's permission to have that public hearing advertised and conducted on January 25th.
All right. I do have a card for this, but since it wasn't properly publicly advertised, we're not going to hear the item, so I'm just going to place it. So I have a motion to table by Commissioner Lober.
Yes, ma'am.
Second? Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, so item H3?
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a petition to vacate a public utility and drainage easement at 110 Silver Hill Lane. Mr. and Mrs. Resor in District 1 requesting the board conduct a public hearing to consider vacating the utility and drainage easement and sign the attached resolution for vacating 43.26-plus-square-feet of the aforementioned easements for an existing structure to remain. There are no objections at this time.
Okay. I have no cards. Commissioner Pritchett?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett for approval, a second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So I have a significant number of cards for item I1, so if the board's okay with it, I'm going to go ahead and hear item J, if that's all right. Okay. So item J1, it's requested adoption of a towing rate resolution, establishing new towing rates.
I'll make a motion to approve unless someone has a thing.
Are you looking for item I? Yeah. Okay, yeah, we just swapped. Okay.
I'll second.
What was the motion? What was the motion? I was... Okay, I have a motion to approve item J1 by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Pritchett. Commissioner Lober?
I don't have a problem with the vast majority of this, but there are a couple items that really do cause me concern. In short, there are two things. One, I think, is mission critical for me, and the other, if someone has a better idea, I'd like to see what it might be. I don't have a solution to the second. So as to the first, the one item that just seemed to be absolutely percentage-wise massive as far as an increase is the tarping costs. And I'm not suggesting that the actual cost of the tarp is or isn't a certain amount, but to go from $17.11 for a tarp to $1,200, and it's referenced twice there, those two, I just, I can't, I can't support this with those two in there. There are some others that I think are essentially subjective in whether or not you want to support them. I can live with them. I think it's important for folks to realize this is not something that's impacting folks who call AAA or who don't have AAA and have a car that breaks down to get towed. This is something that's going to impact folks who end up getting, in many circumstances, stopped by the police and arrested for DUI or for driving without a license, and they're not allowed to have their car moved because they're taken into custody and they get towed. So if someone's going to make a poor decision along those lines, increasing the cost to reflect what the industry is now at, I don't have an issue with, but I would be supportive if we struck the tarping. As to the other item, if someone has an idea, wonderful. Tying it to Consumer Price Index, I suppose, is better than tying it to nothing, but I can't help but wonder if there's not some transportation or automotive transportation index that we could tie it to that's a little more specific to the industry? Because, you know, if you think back a little way, maybe a year ago now, we had a discussion about utilities and what index we should tie them to, and there was discussion about CPI, and the board consensus, I think it may have been 5-0 at the time, was that the best index was one specific to the utilities industry, not just Consumer Price Index in general. I don't know whether it's going to work out to be a higher or a lower number, but it makes more sense to me if there is a better index to tie this to. But like I said, that's not mission critical, but the tarping costs to me are mission critical. I just think that's an astronomical increase, but the rest I'm happy to support.
Commissioner Tabia? Is your mic not working? Press, try the button. That button. There you go.
Great. Thanks, Madam Chair. Yeah, goodness gracious, too long. As someone who has been towed, not for DUI, but many times in college, I'll tell you what, I may need to drink if we pass this. So let me go over the reasons why this doesn't deserve not only a vote, doesn't deserve anyone's consideration. Base rate increase would go from $114 to $238. That is more than a 100% increase, and it only goes down from there. The mileage rate goes from $3.12 to $6, almost 100% increase. The hourly rate goes from $75 to $225. Now, these are, I'm sure, professionals, but we have many physicians and attorneys that don't get anywhere near $225 an hour. Outside storage, that's another good one. $22.80 to $55. Now, $55, I can park at the port and, you know, that costs an arm and a leg. Inside storage, I guess that's relatively a good deal. That goes from $28 to $75. As Commissioner Lober mentioned, my favorite one was tarping that has a 7,000% increase. But those are fee increases. Then we get to my favorite ones. When we institute new fees, this is the most dangerous. Under Class D, towing hourly rate is $1,250. And to make matters worse, there is a two-hour minimum. So in other words, folks are going to be hit with $2,500. A new one is $200 to shrink wrap a vehicle. And here's where it gets really scary when you get into the details. There is a fuel surcharge that makes sense, I guess, for the tow truck to go from the vehicle to wherever it's going. That makes sense, maybe. However, here's the scary part. They're adding in a provision where the tow truck would get mileage from wherever they start. And Florida has a way during hurricanes where we bring down utility companies from other states. So conceivably, a tow truck driver could start in Georgia, drive 250, 300 miles, and bill for a two-mile, two-or-three-mile tow on top of that. So my thought was, this is crazy to me. What are other counties doing? So I spent a little time with this, and Palm Beach County, you know, one far more wealthy than us, is a base rate of 123. Again, right now, we're at 114, so they're just a little bit higher than us. We would go to 238, almost double what they're doing in Palm Beach. I looked at Duval and Flagler. They are quite a bit lower than us. They're at $109. Orange County is at $125, and so this would put us right at the top of this. I know, you know, folks that are accused of DUI doesn't necessarily mean they're guilty of it, but there's plenty of people that park, and through error and judgment of I made, you shouldn't be penalized to the tune of, well, thousands and thousands of dollars. I can go into more detail on this. I feel bad for the tow truck drivers, though if we pass this, I may go into towing industry. It's certainly far more lucrative than being a teacher. The one part I would support that I think is fair is Section 11, which calls for an increase in rates per annum of 3% or CPI, whichever is lower. And an argument I'm sure might be made come up here is, and it would be a fair one, one I wouldn't vote for, but the fair one would be, well, these rates haven't been touched since 2008. So if you computed the CPI from 2008 to today, even if you put in 2021 and the 6.8%, you'd be at 23 or 24%. Again, let me go back to the base rates. 100%, 300%, 100%, 250%, 7,000%. So I don't think 23% is reasonable, but we're at multitudes of that. I could get into other ones here. Okay, I will, because some of this stuff is so crazy. There are fees that are listed in our, or suggested to be listed in our ordinance that aren't even mentioned in other counties. Shrink wrapping, Class A, we have a fee that's not listed in other counties. Oil dry absorbent, extra manpower, that's another good one at $1,250. So an argument may be made, well, we need to be similar to other counties. Here, not only are we going to be two or three times more in fees, we're going to have fees that these other counties don't have. So for all those reasons and many more, I can't get close to supporting a what amounts to, you know, even at the best, 100% increase, at worst, a 7,000% for our current fees, a whole bunch of new fees, fees that aren't in our neighboring counties. Again, I appreciate this. I would really appreciate this if I was a tow truck driver, but this isn't, I don't think, fair to our citizens. I think when these numbers go into effect, you're going to see a lot more tow truck drivers come into Brevard County when they realize that they can be making all this money. In fact, they probably won't be in Brevard County. They'll start in Volusia County, drive into Brevard County, and get the $2.50 to drive in here and pick up somebody's car. This is absolutely ludicrous, but thanks for bringing it up.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah. Madam Chair, do we have somebody that's representing the proposal that I can ask questions to?
I don't have cards, and this isn't my item.
I know. I was just wondering if somebody was here for it.
Someone from the industry that could answer questions? There's somebody back there.
We got this, and we started making calls to find out what's competitive now. I think when we got into the A and B, they're more like the regular cars, but the C and the D, I think these are like semis, like that fallover on the interstate that these guys have to get off. And so the 2008 numbers, I know they're going in the hole with that, but I don't know how to find the competitive rates as far as these bigger trucks, but I know, I live close to the interstate, and we'll see this happening all the time, and it takes big equipment to get these semis off the interstate. So that would be my question for you, sir. As far as the A and B, the numbers, they're a little higher than what's in the market, but they're really close to what the market's charging right now for towing. But these Class C and D, again, I didn't have anywhere I could call to find out about that, because I guess it's regulated. So that would be my question, sir, is how you came up with these change in numbers for the 14-year change, since we changed it last time to get these. But I do think 2008, you guys have to be losing money, because it's got to cost a lot to get these guys off the road. So did you understand my question?
Yeah, I think so, Ms. Pritchett. In response to the, to do, our particular client, I think there are multiple tow operators that may have weighed in on this, are particularly interested in the Class C and Class D in specific. Our clients do or in particularly or primarily the heavy tow business where they are responding to wrecks on I-95 and the like, and are using the Class C and D. The D is moving large 18-wheeler trucks and the others, since probably the price disparity, I think, as Commissioner Tabia referenced. If you likely ask the industry, when they look at what others have done and price comparisons industry-wide across the board, certainly, they would likely come in with a number higher than what the original resolution would have proposed, which is the 2008 base rate plus a 2% or, I'm sorry, plus CPI or 3%, whatever happens to be lower. So we are very interested in adding the categories that did not exist in 2008. That's your Class D and others, because those particular pieces of equipment probably were not in use at that time, and certainly we'd be interested in the increases. Commissioner Tabia certainly understands where he's coming from, from a percentage perspective. That is the request that is coming from the local tow operators in the industry, but we would certainly appreciate and be open to any requests that this board would support.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Moore? Okay, well, Commissioner Lober had his light on first. I just wasn't sure if it was to talk or ask.
Both, but I do have one for Mr. Moore. This is far from mission critical for me, but just in considering some of Commissioner Tabia's comments, I was looking at some things online, and oil dry absorbent is just, is a talking point real quickly here. It says $30 per bag, and I think regardless of what it is, whether it's the smallest possible bag or the biggest possible bag, you may want to specify the bag size, because it looks like they come by pails, by 32-quart quantities, 20-pound quantities, because I can just tell you, we're going to get complaints. You guys may end up getting sued over, well, they charged us $30 for the smaller bag when it should have been $30 for the bigger bag. So again, for everyone's sake, including your clients, ours, and folks that are out there, you may want to specify that. But let me ask, as far as some of these particular rates, I understand that you said that they were suggested by folks in the local industry. were suggested by folks in the local industry. Do you have any info on hand? Because I would like to support something to increase this, because I think it hasn't been revisited long enough, that there really needs to be a profound readjustment to get it back to where it needs to be. But do you have anything that goes toward what Commissioner Pritchett was saying as far as what the reasonable rates really are? Because I don't mind, but at this point, I'm kind of in a juncture where I've heard so much, I almost want to sit on it for a meeting, come back, having done more due diligence based on the concerns that were expressed today, to revisit. But do you have that info? If you have it handy, I'd appreciate it.
I'm happy to speak for our clients and Commissioner for an additional meeting, and the info that we've collected, both industry-wise, other counties, other states and the like, would be beneficial to you. Happy to provide that, you know, to you for your review and assessment in that regard. And if a table getting coming back, it's not a time critical in that regard. I mean, certainly, we've been waiting since 2008 in that regard. And I know that Commissioner Tobias believes that potentially the operators should have raised that, but we do agree with you that there's been a significant change since that time and no increase in price. So we'd be happy to provide that for your consideration, and if that in the future meeting would give you enough information to be able to make a decision, be happy to do that.
I appreciate that, sir. And if, just for other folks' edification, if this ends up not passing, or if it ends up getting tabled, I just want to make clear, I do intend to support an increase that's substantial to bring you back to where you need to be. I just have concerns about doing something tonight. So that's where I'm at, if folks need to count votes.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Moore. You've done a great job arguing for the industry. But to be very clear, these numbers here were the ask of the industry themselves. Is that correct?
I would presume so. I know that there are multiple tow operators that have contacted the staff or the board, and relative to that, not certain of the exact specifics of the ones that are in front of you, but certainly, I'm sure if you asked them that their information provided went toward what's provided to you in that agenda item.
Okay. And we had this conversation before. Under no situation would I even get close to voting for fee increases that are, you know, 50, 100, 500 times more than what the CPI would be. So I have no right to make an ask on this, because I won't support it. But I'm nonetheless going to make an ask for the, as you're fighting for the industry, I'm going to fight for, you know, the taxpayers out there. So here's my ask. Again, I'm not going to support it, whether you add this or not, to be very clear, but it sounds like the industry is what you're representing is Class whatever, C and D, correct?
I would say as an industry as well, I said our clients are primarily in the heavy tow business where, I mean, that's most of the case. I think I've shared with most of you. Our clients brought these issues forward because we were confronted by insurance companies who stated both in terms of prices or missing items that they were not allowed to charge for the same, and so.
Got it. So here's my ask to you. I was towed a couple times in college. I had a Volvo. I imagine that I would be the Class A, the regular tow. And I imagine most people that are towed in Brevard County, my residents aren't driving those big rigs on the highway, they're driving the ones. I would ask, again, you don't have to follow this, but you would at least come with a somewhat reasonable rate for the base rate on Class A. I think when you're double that of the surrounding counties, that's not reasonable. That will have a large impact on many of the residents and won't seek to address the issues that you've brought up, which are the large wrecks that take place on I-95. Again, when you're counting votes, I'm not going to be there no matter what, because these increases that are so astronomical, but please take into consideration the folks out there that drive regular vehicles, instead of those that drive those, you know, large trucks, that insurance pays up instead of the individual having to pick up the tab.
More than happy to, Madam Chair. Happy to take into account Commissioner Tobias's request, and at the request of Commissioner Loeb, we'd be more than happy if this item were tabled, happy to provide him with whatever he needs from that standpoint, so he's at least aware from background information, and any other commissioner would be the same.
And I would ask too, just as an ask for me, again, I understand that by ordinance, that was supposed to be increased by 3% or CPI, whichever is lower. I would like to see what that number looks like as well, you know? And obviously, it won't apply to the new items you have on, but again, I know when we talked about it this afternoon, you talked about some of those concerns with the larger equipment and the expenditures involved with that, and I think that that's kind of where they're losing a lot. And I like Commissioner Tobias's idea to make that rate for the average resident a little more affordable, but I understand the need for the industry to recoup their costs as well. But again, I'd like to see a little bit more of that comparison, maybe take out some of the other silly things that they're charging for, especially if it's a $30 bag of, you know, this is oil dry. Thank you, Kurt. If it's a $30 bag of oil dry used on a, you know, a $2,000 tow, it's probably insignificant and less for us to mull through and more nitpicky, I guess. That should be included in the cost of that expensive tow.
Yeah. On that one specifically, that's been a pretty significant industry challenge there. On our heavy toes on I-95 and the like, there's a series, according to the risk policy, the state policy, of things that must be brought to that particular scene. And so again, some of those are applicable to the much larger scenarios. I would probably argue to Commissioner Tobias that that tarping falls into the same category. We're talking about tarping for a much larger vehicle that would fall into that category of the multiple tarps and the larger size to get you to that higher multiple. So would be happy to clarify what specifically those are that apply in that category, and maybe that would certainly not change Commissioner Tobias's opinion, but may clarify for yourself.
Because the examples I received were interesting, talking about like a truck that's filled full of sugar that ended up causing a bee problem at the tow yard, and just a snowballing mess, you know, to put it mildly. Commissioner Pritchett?
Mr. Moore, I think maybe if we came back with what you, what we estimate the competitive rates are, again, like you have your base rate, when we called around, we got one from like 130 all the way up to 220. So again, it's not that far out of the delta, but it might be a little higher. So I don't know, so maybe that would help a little bit, again, sir. But as far as the Class C and Class Ds, maybe they can give us examples of the things they have to do and get off, because I've actually watched a few of them on the interstate. It's against right over behind my house, and it's a lot of work. So I think that would help a lot. Again, probably with the C and D, I'm totally comfortable with it. Again, when I mentioned this, I thought the others were like within the range, maybe a little higher, maybe we can negotiate on that a little bit. But I think the numbers of the amount of towing we have to do and those types of things, but I know they've been losing money on the C and D. And I know you guys have to keep updating your equipment to be able to get these things off as fast as you can to keep other wrecks going on. So that's what I'm looking for too, when you come back, sir.
Got it. Happy to provide it, Commissioner.
Commissioner Loeb?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Moore. First, one of the asks, and I don't think this is a huge one necessarily, based on a comment by Commissioner Tobias that I do agree with, the concern about where the vehicle is originating from and the mileage, if it's built by mileage, or the time, if it's built by time, getting from whatever the origin is to the actual site where the pickup's occurring. I don't necessarily have the same degree of concern as he does with that, but I think it might be appropriate to look at implementing some sort of a cap, whether it's 25 miles or some other number of miles. So we don't have someone from, let's say, MEMS, driving down to Valkyria, and now it's an absolute fortune, because I do think that that, in considering his comments, has the potential to get a little bit extreme.
Absolutely. And that would be point of origination, I think, is what you're referring to.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to interject a little background. Having been in the body shop business, I've seen and received vehicles that have been in crashes. Never dealt with a big rig, but I can tell you that one size does not fit all, and that's kind of the situation where you guys are or your clients are. Because if you don't charge for the oil dry, those are just the kind of things that really add up over time. So how do you price that when, for example, if you have a truck, pickup truck, not a big rig, but a pickup truck, and that person's carrying a whole bunch of, let's say, house paint, and he gets rear-ended by another pickup truck and does substantial damage to the back end? Well, that paint's everywhere. It's on neighboring cars, it's on the roadway, it's on the curbs, it's on the grass, it's probably killing neighbors' lawns. Those are the things that you have to take into account, and they should be reimbursed because it's their responsibility. It's also their responsibility, when there's an accident at an intersection, to clean up, which I can tell you, I don't drive the whole county, but I can tell you that there are an awful lot of intersections that I see that I can tell that whoever the tow truck driver was took his little push broom out, piled it up in the middle, then jumped in his rig and left. I don't know who's responsible for making that happen, but just throwing that out there, I think it's the officer in control of the scene, whether it be a state, or federal, or local municipality, or our sheriff. So if you would look into that, I would be appreciative, because it's not a big deal. I don't think it's even a safety issue, but it is certainly an appearance issue, it's a quality of life issue, as that stuff continues to accumulate. So I agree that in substance that you have to come up with something for these guys, because they haven't had, I would hate to have a business that I wasn't able to increase my costs over 12 years, 14 years, whatever the case may be. But I think my fellow commissioners have raised some good issues as well.
Absolutely.
So I look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Yeah, be happy to. Madam Chair, again, we, at our request, would be happy to have the item tabled and happy to return at the next meeting after we've had an opportunity to share the information that's been requested.
Commissioner Loeb?
Madam Chair, I'm just thinking procedurally now, maybe the best way to handle it is if the motion's withdrawn, Commissioner Smith can simply add it to the next agenda. Would that work?
Okay. I want to withdraw your motion.
Sure.
Okay. Yours obviously still stands.
It's fine for us.
Okay, so the motion's been withdrawn. Do you want to make a new motion? I mean.
I don't know that we need one, because if Commissioner Smith adds it, essentially serves as the.
But this is, the request is adoption of the new rate, so do we need to?
Motion table the next meeting.
Yeah, she wants to.
Okay, I'll second if that's your one.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Pritchett to table till next meeting, and second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I switched those items, because I thought this item would be a lot faster. So I apologize. But in all fairness, we have a good amount of cards, so, all right. Board okay, or do you guys need a five minutes? You good? Yeah, you want a break?
Whatever you want.
You want five minutes? Okay. All right, moving forward. Item I-1. Mary Ellen? Mike? Somebody?
I believe Commissioner Tobias is going to introduce this item.
Oh, you're going to introduce it?
Yes, please, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I'd like to, with your indulgence, go over a little bit of the background.
And you tell me when you're done talking, because then I have the card. So if you want to come back to it, that's fine by me, too.
Listen to what the participants have to say, and then make some recommendations for board action at the conclusion, if that's okay, Madam Chair. First of all, having been in public office for whatever, 12, 14 years, I've gotten many emails from and letters from the Audubon Society, and normally, I crumple them up and throw them in the trash, not the recycle bin, but the trash. So I was excited to see that the Audubon Society and the position that I had were in direct alignment. It made me smile. But more seriously, this issue has come down to scrub jay population in the area that I represent in Brevard County. If something is not done, experts point out that the scrub jay population could disappear as soon as 20 years. So this is a very serious issue, and it has something, it is something that has evolved here relatively quickly. I think most of us know the background. Commissioner Smith had given us the biology of why cutting down trees is actually beneficial to the population, but there is quite a bit of science that backs that up. So let me tell you where we are. Malabar is threatening to withhold permitting necessary for scrub jay maintenance, which they previously provided on 5/18/21. A land clearing permit was issued in November. Work was set out to begin on said land, but it was brought to the attention of the permit, was only good for six months. Now, Malabar City Council is threatening to withhold said permit. Again, if we don't do this, according to Mr. Knight, we could face dire consequences for a species that is extremely important. On, recently, on January 3, county staff gave one of, I'll get to a little bit later, mini presentations to the town of Malabar regarding the scrub jay sanctuary, consistent with the Board of County Commissioners' previous direction to engage the public and interest groups. The town city council responded in a manner that I believe requires immediate attention. Before I get there on what was said, and I have some audio, you guys got an email this morning, I thought it was, or sorry, Friday, I guess, I thought that was pretty interesting. It said, "I am the town clerk. I assure you that summary of the meeting is in no way inflammatory or threatening." I've got some audio here that I'm more than willing to play, but the town council indicated if the board doesn't acquiesce to its demands, they will make it, quote, "painful," and, quote, "difficult and expensive as possible for the county to carry out its restoration function." Guys, we're trying to help birds out on land that we are in charge of, and they're making threats. And can I get that audio played here? I certainly don't want anyone to be misquoted. It's only 10 or 15 seconds.
... to set the circumstances such that the easiest way for eels to do what they want to is to come to an agreement with the town that is mutually excessive. Right. And that any other method is painful, difficult, lengthy, and expensive.
They need to take us seriously.
Exactly. That's inside.
Right. They need to take us seriously. They really mean this, and they're, you know.
Because I don't believe.
They need to listen to us.
Right. And to reiterate.
You go to the meeting, they're going to just say, "This is what we're doing. Isn't this great?" And they're going to have a bulldozer out there.
Okay. This isn't us saying this, this is science saying it. And there's a particular town councilman who, I don't have a problem with people of opposing parties or the same party, this person happens to be of the same party that I am, but who is extremely, extremely, extremely hypocritical. Let me get to why here in a minute. This person is a professor at FIT in the sciences, but has absolutely disregarded any science, nor provided countering data to show that doing away with the trees will at all help the scrub jay population. And here's the worst part of the whole thing. This individual was on the advisory group that reviewed the management plan and voted for the management plan of this, and now this individual is grandstanding for the six or eight bike riders that enjoy recreation in that. And it's wonderful they enjoy recreation, but we have to balance the future of a species in South Brevard versus some folks that want some shade. They'd still be able to bike ride there, they just wouldn't have that amount of shade. I'm sorry, I'm a little disappointed by being threatened by a town council, and I have some suggested action here, I think the board can undertake here, but I'd certainly like to hear what certain residents or experts have to say on this. Every email I got back, I invited anyone to provide any type of data that would show that leaving the trees there was beneficial to scrub jays. Of course, I didn't get any.
I listened to that meeting as well, and I think what was most disturbing is when that same individual, and I don't know why we're not saying his name, but that same councilman that claimed, that discussed the sciences, said, "Yeah, but it doesn't match our objective," I think is what the argument. And Mike, you are a saint for how you managed the accusations, and I listened to the entire two hours and 45 minutes, I think it was, that meeting. And I think I played that same section that you played before you even provided it to this board for the audio. So, okay, we're going to listen to cards first. I would just ask that we be respectful of one another. It's three. It's three minutes. So I'm going to name off a few names just so we can kind of keep things in order. Ms. Suhan will be first and Kim Zerillo, and after Kim, Vince Lamb.
Madam Chair, just as a heads up, do we have half a dozen, a dozen, or 50?
Nine so far.
Thank you.
But there could be more people filling them out, I'm not sure. You state your name and where you live.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. My name is Suhan and I'm about a 30-year resident of the town of Malabar. So yes, I'm one of the six to eight bikers, but I'm also a Malabar resident and have been very concerned about this, concerned about the public engagement process that was afforded to us in Malabar. And I think if you listened to the full meeting, you heard a lengthy presentation that I did after researching all the guidance documents for the eels program. Now, to their credit, Mr. Knight has done a really good job kind of coming back around and meeting with the town residents and meeting with the town council, but we really haven't had much time to work together. And I think, given that these properties are 20% of the town, I think it requires a little bit more special consideration of the impact of the management of the properties on the aspects and the quality of life of the town. So from my perspective, I think, as I said, Mike's doing a good job of bringing his team into the town. We have a meeting next week. We have some time in the field with the selection and management committee meeting, or committee. And it feels to me, as someone who has been on those properties for the last almost 30 years, that it's not an all or nothing approach, that we really should be able to collaborate and preserve enough of the vegetation that is, for example, adjacent to several homeowners' associations. This isn't about six or eight bikers. I mean, yes, as a biker, it's that for me, but for residents of the town, it's a broader issue than just the trails. And so I think it's really important that the eels program respects the town of Malabar and understands why the town is acting the way that it's acting right now. There's a history that has gone on for a long time where there's competing objectives of the eel program. And if you read all the guidance documents, you'll see the ballot language, the land management manual, the sanctuary management manual, they have references to both the environmental preservation aspects of the mission as well as passive recreation. That's what was in the ballot. They were on equal footing and appreciate that there's a desire to preserve the scrub jays in South Brevard and I think most of the Malabar residents would support that. But it doesn't have to be done tomorrow and I think the better course of action, if we could have some time in the town to work through the Trails and Greenways Committees, to work through the eels program Recreation Education Advisory Committee, there are a lot of advisory committees that could inform this process and provide good guidance. And there are folks, there are a lot of scientists that live in the town of Malabar that would like an opportunity to weigh in on this, but we just haven't had the opportunity to do so yet. So I would ask that you give us time to work through the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Zerillo? And after Kim, it'll be Vince.
Well, um.
You state your name and where you.
My name is Kim Zerillo. I live at 68, 6830 Sheridan Road, Melbourne Village. Yes, these conversations have gone on for a long time. Some years ago, it started out, there was a drainage problem in town in Malabar, wanted the eel program to pay for that. Then, when that happened, didn't happen, or there was some agreement, something got worked out, then the town wanted to share property in the cost of a town hall. So that didn't happen because we did not build the education facility down there. Now, this particular disagreement has gone on for 10 years. In the interim, or longer, in the interim, the town was allowed, and they were successful, in winning an FCT grant for another piece of scrub property. In their agreement with the state of Florida, they agreed to maintain, restore the scrub and some other things. The Trail Committee is very focused on the trail and I understand that. But I also understand that it takes capacity, it takes money, it takes knowledge, it takes resources to manage these lands. And the town hasn't been able to take care of the FCT property and they are supposed to be working with the eel program in order to get that done because they do not have the capacity. In their minutes, in their budget, there is nothing that says they have thought about this, there's a plan to do this, and there's been discussion and presentations with numerous public presentations in the past before COVID and then, of course, in Zoom, which limits. However, so recreation is encouraged and welcomed on eel properties. This particular property is a very key piece of property in the corridor of scrub that needs to be maintained and restored for scrub habitat. And that does include plants, although they're not as exciting as birds to some. So I would ask that we move on, let the eel program do their job, manage the property, and get on with it. I don't see any reason to turn over management of land to an entity that cannot manage what they have already and although, you know, and they don't plan for it and they don't seem to want to plan for it. Thank you.
After Vince, it'll be Keith Winston and then Bill Debusk.
Good evening. I'm Vince Lamb of South Merritt Island. The Brevard County Eel Program is critically important because so little land remains as natural habitat for our native wildlife and plants. Most of us choose to cover our properties with buildings, pavement, turf grass, and exotic plants. Then we apply chemicals that kill insects and unwanted plants. Even many of our parks are covered with turf grass and exotic plants and sprayed with hazardous chemicals. We have chosen these human habitats where wildlife cannot survive. Brevard County was ground zero for the extinction of the dusky seaside spara in the 80s, the bird that existed for thousands of years, last lived in the wild in the St. John's River Basin of our county. The last few perished in captivity at Disney. A species is considered becoming extinct when it no longer occupies its original range. The Florida scrub jay clearly fits that condition. A population of approximately 30 birds vanished from North Brevard to Buck Lake properties, most likely because of the habitat needs were not met. The eel program was founded in 1990 by local leaders who saw the need to protect natural areas from massive development that was taking place. More than 70% of the voters chose to tax themselves to fund conservation land purchases and the required land management. From the onset, the eel program set a mission of maintaining lands for biodiversity, including protection of endangered and threatened species. The program was extended in 2004, again, with more than 70% of the voters taxing themselves. 28,000 acres of conservation land are currently managed by the eel program in a county that spans almost a million acres. U.S. Commissioners are the ultimate oversight of the eel program and its lands. Please ensure that these properties are managed properly to protect our wildlife and natural areas. Thank you.
Thank you. After Keith, Bill Debusk.
Hi, Keith Winston, representing Brevard Zoo. First of all, thank you, Commissioner Tobias. I appreciate you, how you framed up this issue today. When I first came here, over 17 years ago, I know, it's a long time compared to many of you, I went to a meeting and one of the first thing I was asked is, "What does a zoo go to do about scrub jays?" And I'm glad to tell you, 17 years later, we've done a lot. Very soon after that, we were approached by both federal and state agencies to develop a way to translocate scrub jays from properties we knew they could not survive to properties where they can survive. We've since built on that. We monitor scrub jays in many areas, including Malabar scrub. And then a few years ago, recognizing that this is not about those scrub jays, it's about a whole population that lives up and down the Atlantic Coastal Ridge where I have a house, as many of you do, because it's a sandy dune, we brought in really the world's expert on forecasting animal populations, the guy who did it for pandas and tigers and every exotic species you can think of. And it's about having tools in our toolbox and restoring property. So I want to make three points. This isn't just about the scrub jays there. It's one population we're trying to save that's really in trouble. Secondly, trees are the death of scrub jays because the biggest issue we face, they don't have the kind of habitat they need, they're really poor flyers, and they're picked off by Cooper's hawks. So if you have trees nearby, the hawks stand up in the trees, as you alluded to, and pick them off. So you can't have it. And we love trees, but real scrub, the kind of scrub habitat that was here and maintained for fires for thousands of years, that we can't let burn as it used to because of homeowners, so we have to go in and do that work. So the second thing is, if you have the trees, the scrub jays at best hang on, which is what's happening to that Malabar population. And we need that as a place for scrub jays to flourish. And the third one, which really just upsets me as somebody who runs the zoo, I don't own the zoo, you know, a board runs a zoo, but for any of you as a private land owner, is this idea that because there are other people using it, they get to dictate what happens on it. That land is owned by the state of Florida, managed for the eels program specifically for the scrub habitat to bring it back. That is the number one priority and that needs to be the priority. And just because you have the opportunity to use it or look at it doesn't mean you can dictate a different use. And as a good capitalist, that just really bothers me to my core. So I wanted to make those three points today. I really appreciate you standing up for scrub jays. They do help to find us in Brevard County. I have visitors who come every year to see the scrub jays. We know what just happened with the Space Coast Birding and Wildlife Festival, there isn't enough birds to see. So there's an economic impact when we lose these species and it's really part of our heritage and what makes us special. So there's plenty of other property there that's not scrub, that can have trees, but the scrub needs to be restored to what it is. So thank you very much for your support of this issue.
Thank you. After Bill, we'll have Jim Burney and then David Montgomery.
Hey, good evening. My name is Bill Debusk. I'm from West Melbourne. I'm here tonight speaking for the Sierra Club, I'm the chairperson for Turtle Coast Group. We have about 8,000 members and supporters in this county and in River County. First, I'd like to say that I'm an avid biker and hiker and I have personally enjoyed the Malabar scrub and the Jordan scrub areas down in Malabar area. The Sierra Club's mission is to enjoy, explore, and protect our environment. Now, I'm not here to speak against fellow bikers and hiker communities. I mean, they're good people. The Sierra Club supports and promotes the enjoyment of our outdoors. I'm here to speak for the importance of maintaining the habitat of the Florida scrub jay. The Florida scrub jay is the only, is only found in Florida. You can travel to like Alaska, Illinois, Mississippi, and you can see a bald eagle, but you cannot travel anywhere other than Florida and see a scrub jay. It's the only bird, only found in Florida. And the Florida scrub jay population is declining. It's listed federally as a threatened species. If that population continues to decline, it'll be an endangered species and if it declines more, it'll be an extinct species. Mike Knight, I was reading, he provided some information last December in a meeting, indicated that we've lost 80% of the scrub jay population in the last 20 years in this county. Development and lack of habitat maintenance are the leading causes of this drastic decline in that population. The latest population viability study indicates that unless we improve the habitat here in Brevard County, the Florida scrub jay will be extinct in all of Brevard County within 40 to 70 years, with one exception, and that's the Merritt Island Wildlife Refuge. And up there, they have a large population and even that population is going to continue to decline unless they, you know, continue to maintain their habitat. We must support improvement to the scrub jay habitat to stop the decline of population. The plans to improve the habitat in the Malabar scrub, we're going to leave the trail system, it's not going to prohibit the public from using that. The public will still be able to enjoy nature and that's good. Because extinction is a definite possibility here in Brevard County, the subject matter experts have developed this plan to protect the scrub jays. With this plan, both scrub jays and people will be able to use the Malabar scrub and scrub jays will have a better chance of surviving. So I'm just asking that you make decisions tonight and in the future that keep the scrub jays from going extinct here in Brevard County. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Jim Burney? And after Jim, David Montgomery.
Hey. I'm Jim Burney, a Rockledge resident, 871 Yorktown Drive. Also been a 16-year member of Associated Builders and Contractors, so we've met before in Tallahassee as well through that group. I'm one of the committee members for the eel selection and management committee as well, though I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of myself. I'm also the president of the Florida invasive plant management association, as well as vegetation management contractor, business owner. I was going to go over three points primarily geared towards the, my opposition to the transfer of Malabar scrub management authority, but I don't think we're at that tonight. So I'll kind of skip down to my bottom point, which is, as a Rockledge resident, I voted in favor of the bond referendum based on my trust and the professionalism and the expertise of the eel program and their positive relationship with the, working relationship with state and federal agencies. I lack the confidence that another municipality chargers managing the land could do so at the same caliber and level of commitment as the eel program in relation to the protection of endangered species. And really, bottom line on it is, authority transfer to any municipality represents a dangerous precedent to abandon other eel programs and other properties if there's ever a dust-up over management issues. This is a dangerous precedent to set. To me, the real issue is, is that scrub jay habitat is probably the least appealing to humans. I mean, it's low, it's hot, it's wide open, it opens the vista to a tremendous view. And, you know, when there's 10,000 acres of it historically, it really didn't matter. But when it's a fragmented scrub and now you're looking across at a Walmart or a neighborhood, it's usually unappealing. So I think that's primarily one of the main issues. The bike folks and the folks in Malabar do think they care about the land greatly. However, it's a difference of opinion. I mean, if the scrub jay preferred habitat was a nice ocamic, we wouldn't have an issue here, but it's not. It's, the habitat is just, it's critical, but it's just not very appealing to humans. And I think that's one of the big issues. I have a few other points. I have a little bit of time left, so I'll jump back up to one. But back to the transfer authority, I do think that, I understand that the conservative, fiscal conservative approach to getting management cost off your books is fine, but it also kind of could be taken as a vote of no confidence to your eel program and your employees, as well as the selection and management committee. I'm not saying that's the intent, but it certainly could be viewed as that. And then the actual process of transferring management authority is going to be time, you know, time-consuming diversion of eel resources as well as legal resources. I mean, it's going to take approval of multiple committees, multiple state agencies, probably the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and that could be just the tip of the iceberg if there's any legal challenges from other organizations as well. So anyway, I oppose the transfer, but I think, hopefully, we're off of that. But definitely, the management of the scrub based on science is important. I've got three seconds. But this was the report that you're talking about and there's four pages of references on the back. It's not just one scientist.
Thank you. David Montgomery and then Heather Elko.
Hello. I don't have, I had some slides, Commissioner, I sent them copy to you. I don't know whether you've seen them or not, but it doesn't matter.
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm David Monte Montgomery. Live on Connect Road in Palm Bay, just off the branches of Turkey Creek.
That's fine.
So I moved here in 79. I started work at Harris Malabar by the Jordan scrub sanctuary in 85 and as a, I used to run recreationally. So I know the Malabar scrub and the Jordan scrub sanctuary very closely. So back then, in 85, the developer at Malabar had just cleared the property and it was basically a moonscape. So the properties on Jordan and Malabar have essentially grown in, over those 30, 40 years. But recently, my advice to the commissioners is, I'm very worried that situations are going to keep Mike Knight and the eel program from doing maintenance on the property. So I've been out there several times over the past few weeks and walked the trails I used to go run and it's really overgrown. We've got a problem and it explains that in detail in the sanctuary management plan, but the scrub pines take over the environment and that's what's happening here is that it's really, I've never seen it so overgrown, both in Jordan and in Malabar scrub sanctuary. So my biggest concern is that I'm worried that lack of maintenance is going to continue to essentially prevent any scrub habitat being available for any scrub jays. That's what I currently feel the situation is. There's very little sandy soil left. It's all overgrown with wax myrtles, scrub pines, and other bushes and it's, they're all more than six feet in height, which is not scrub. more than six feet in height, which is not scrub sanctuary habitat. I'm worried that this, we're going to miss this season, we're going to go into next season of maintenance. I don't think a transfer will occur to town of Malabar, but I do think that things can get tied up where we're, in another couple of years where we're not doing things. I think, as a person who's very experienced with this area, this area is very overgrown and very unmaintained. So I don't know what the solution is, but I'm very worried that we're losing a lot of time on a time-urgent situation where the habitat's essentially not there right now. So I think that concludes what I was going to say. Thank you for your time.
Heather Elko. And after Heather, we'll have Bo Platt.
Hello. I'm Heather Elko, Melbourne.
Can you pull down your mic?
I'm sorry.
Can you pull down that mic so it's okay?
I'm Heather Elko from Melbourne. I come before you as a citizen who has cherished the Brevard County environment for over 40 years. I support the Eel restoration plan for Malabar scrub because it is based on thorough analysis and ecological best practices. The Eel program does what it was intended to do. It manages environmentally endangered lands for the benefit of all Brevard citizens. Scrub jays cannot survive in a non-scrub environment. Citizens who value trees for their aesthetic qualities and the shade the trees provide may not realize that by ignoring the Eel land management plan, they will be contributing to the demise of a beloved species that they probably already cherish. Our human wants are just that, wants, not needs. Native animals and plants of the rare Florida scrub don't have a choice. They can't pick up and move if we destroy their habitat. They will simply fade away. Overly large trees in the scrub environment are unnatural, and their removal will benefit all, including us humans, if we take the measured, responsible approach that is our Eel management plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Bo Platt. And after Bo, Laurlee Thompson.
Thank you. I'm Bo Platt, 844 West Whitmire Drive in Melbourne. And I'm a board member of the South Brevard chapter of the Florida Native Plant Society, so I'm tonight representing the chapter and the 164 dues-paying members who live in South Brevard, some of them in Malabar. And I really can't say anything, I think, better than what Jim and Keith and Vince and Kim have said, but I do want to say we support, we fully support the preservation and the restoration of the scrub habitat to ensure the viability of the scrub jays. And we support the efforts of the work of the Eel group to maintain the habitat in that manner so that, you know, we can continue to enjoy the scrub jays and those that come after us can. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurlee.
I was just going to say that. Laurlee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, MMS. And I've been a citizen here in Brevard County for almost 70 years. It's hard to believe. But I can remember as a kid, when the fires would come, you know, lightning would start fires, and there wasn't that many people that lived in Florida back then, and the fires would burn for days. Ashes would rain on Titusville for days, you know, from these massive scrub fires that took place. And, you know, those things don't happen anymore. Not that many counties in Florida have scrub. So we have a responsibility, not only to our own citizens, that voted, by the way, to preserve these lands for biodiversity, but we have a responsibility to the whole entire state of Florida. Brevard County has a lot more scrub than any other county, and we started this program to manage the scrub and keep that legacy going. And it's not all about scrub jays either. Some of the rarest plants on the entire planet live in Florida scrub, and over 90% of Florida scrub has been turned into shopping malls and housing developments. And so we have these properties that we've already bought them, we already have them, we've spent the money. We have a responsibility, not only to ourselves, but to the whole people of the whole state of Florida, to manage those properties so that it's a healthy scrub habitat, so that other people can come here and look at it. I'm the founder of the Space Coast Birding and Wildlife Festival. Unfortunately, we canceled it on Thursday because we can't fight COVID, but a lot of people come from all over the world to come here and look at our scrub properties. And so we should be maintaining them. You can't depend on the population of scrub jays at Merritt Island to be our scrub jay population, because that could be a sink. And if they go out, then, you know, if we don't have scrub jays on the mainland too, we're, you know, we're in trouble. The Eel program has basically given up on trying to keep scrub jays viable in north of our county. So within a few years, our scrub jays in the north end of the county are going to be extinct. We can't stop it. We don't have enough quality scrub in the north end of the county. The scrub jays have been gone off the Barrier Island for years now. The only place that we have left is the south end of the county. And so I hope that you would be proud of what we've done with the Eel program and continue its legacy, and let's keep those scrub properties viable for ourselves and our visitors.
Since you have like 15 seconds left and you brought it up, can you talk, can you very briefly discuss what a sink location is?
Yeah, a sink is where the population, even with good management, where the population continues to go down. And that's happening on some parts of the Merritt Island Wildlife Refuge. And then you also have the commercial space industry, and they're taking a lot of upland habitat around the shuttle runway, and that's prime scrub jay property. So we can't depend on Merritt Island and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to keep our responsibility to the state of Florida to keep our scrub jays viable. We have to keep our mainland population going too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. Just adding to what Laurlee said, there being enough genetic material too is one of the other things talked about. The Florida scrub jay is the only bird species unique to Florida. Why is it, it's not our state bird? I don't know. Malabar scrub sanctuary, the name says it's all the purpose. As part of the endangered lands program is to help save the scrub jay from extinction. That is the first priority of these lands, the second being complementary to the use in such a way that works with the purpose of the sanctuary. This reflects the will of the voters who voted for Eels. I just want to put on record how incredibly impressed I am by the Eels program and staff. The brainshare knowledge that they have on their board is so impressive. If you go to Google Scholar and you type in scrub jay plus Brevard, and you'll see the scientific studies that have been done here, these scientists sit on the scrub, on the Eels Board. I attended an Eels Board meeting about the scrub jays. It lasted five hours discussing the challenges and strategy to saving the species, which is expected to go extinct in 20 years. Now, with the rate of development we see going on, and I see some of the planning and zoning meetings where they're discussing that this is scrub jay habitat, that there are scrub jays there, and it's being developed. The Florida scrub jay is vulnerable to extinction because of habitat destruction, degradation, and fragmentation. This was discussed a lot because of the lack of continuity, and that relates to the lack of genetic material. This study, which I printed just a few pages, says biological criteria for the recovery of Florida scrub jay populations on public lands in Brevard County and Indian River County. This was funded by Fish and Wildlife Service. This is David Behringer, and a subject matter expert that lives right here in Brevard County. He did another study discussing the scrub jay populations on the coastal Barrier Island, Hightower, which is another FCT site. So I was kind of curious about those comments about FCT. There were eight pairs on Hightower when Sally Beach took that over. There are none now. So the comment made about the lack of FCT management by some of these local entities is very valid. Oops, sorry. So the scrub jays was, yeah, funded by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, focuses on existing and proposed non-federal conservation areas along Florida's central Atlantic coast. I wholeheartedly support the environmental endangered lands program. Conserve and conservation is just common sense as it relates to our own health, as being in harmony with the health of the lands and water around us. Eels sunsets. Oh, thank you.
Thanks. All right. That's all the cards I have. Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you, ma'am. Friday, when we got that email, it got my attention because the body of it said that the meeting was no way inflammatory or threatening. And so I thought, okay, I got to go watch this. So I clicked and watched it, and my response back to her was, you know, thank you for the email, maybe not so much threatening, but it was definitely inflammatory. So it had me go in and listen to the topic. Commissioner Tobias, thank you for bringing this forward. I started doing some research on this. You know, when we get information here, we try to just gather data so that we can make good decisions. And so I most respectfully am proud to serve with you guys because you do that. We pull up information, and some of the accusations I heard from that meeting were just, I just, I'm sorry, I'm sitting there rolling my eyes, listening to it. But I asked a specific question. This scrub jay sanctuary was acquired specifically for scrub jays when we purchased this. Matter of fact, it's owned by Florida, the state of Florida. We just took over the maintenance, which is 40,000 to 60,000 a year. So we've invested, as a county, $1,100,000 to $1,600,000. So, you know, we've done what we can do because our Eels Board is good at spending the time trying to figure out how to maintain this property. We probably need to work on some more funds for maintaining. Mr. Montgomery, I heard you. But the primary goal and the purpose for this piece of property was for scrub jays. And I kept hearing in that meeting, they kept saying that wasn't voter intent. So I pulled out the language of the ballot, and it said that, you know, first of all, when you hear Eels, environmentally endangered lands, you're thinking things that are about to go extinct are things that are very critical to trying to help maintain. So with that, this is definitely, when you buy it for the scrub jays and you know they're already having some problems with survival, it's definitely within the voter intent to buy this property for this. So that was my first thing, is trying to figure out if that was what we were fulfilling when we did it. And it was interesting to me as well that we had the permit, as Commissioner Tobias brought up, and the problem was we were having a hard time to get the grant funding, the money we needed to go in to do this job, his recommendation from this board. And so the permit expired. And for it to just switch around that quickly from the city was very interesting for me. I know it's in the city area, but it's federal property that we pay to maintain. So it just, the conversation I was hearing at the meeting kind of, it was interesting. And then to hear, Mr. Knight, I have to tell you, you really handled yourself very professionally. I was really impressed with the way you brought the information and the way you respectfully gave answers. I thought you were incredible. Thank you for that. It was interesting when you brought up the project manager of NASA that did the report, I think his name is Dr. Renninger, and based on other information, that nobody asked, you know, of course, you're not the scientist, you said you have this, but nobody asked to see it beforehand or to look at it, which is, I think, is a good thing to do if you're wanting to find out whether we're making a good decision with this. Now, nobody wants to go in and have to cut trees down. It's expensive, it's messy, and it's time-consuming. So for the Eels Board to come back saying that this is necessary for the survival of the scrubs, you know, you have to consider that information when you're in here trying to make these decisions. So I, that's just as far as whether we should do this or not. I'm leaning to the side, this is something we definitely should do. You guys gave the recommendation, and, you know, you're more passionate about this and more knowledgeable than I am. But I do want to mention, when I listened to the Malabar Commission, and I agree with Commissioner Tobias on this, he brought this information. Everybody's allowed to have a different opinion. It's totally okay. But I didn't like the way you retreated, sir. It concerned me very much. I didn't like that Commissioner Tobias's name was brought up like it was. I didn't like the fact that anybody who didn't agree with what was being brought forth were all classified as arrogant now. It really concerns me when that conversation started getting shut down. And also, the item that Commissioner Tobias brought up today playing the clip, that they're going to make it expensive for the taxpayers to do what the taxpayers wanted done. I just had a lot of concern with that. So I just wanted to mention that, and again, with Commissioner Zonka, I know we're not mentioning names, I don't know why either, but just the language he used and some things that were said was very concerning to me because the county is very good to cities. And I just, I just thought it was very unprofessional and unnecessary, and I really didn't like the way you re treated, sir. So I wanted to say that. Commissioner Tobias, I'm probably going to support whatever you need to bring forward here, sir, to do this.
Majority of those really unfair comments were by Councilman Steve Rivet, so I'll say the name. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And in full disclosure, Eels is running out, I think it was mentioned in Sunset. This is not a program that I would have supported before. This is not a program I will support as it moves forward, whether a voter or up here on the commission. But what I do support is our system. I do support the more than 70% of people that said that they wanted their tax dollars voluntarily to go to this program. And the objective is very simple. It's stated in the policy meeting, the primary objective of land is acquisition environmentally endangered land for preservation and conservation. There is a secondary one, and it deals with activities, but we're not doing away with anyone's right to these lands. They still have the opportunity to participate in activities, maybe with less shade, but we're not taking it away. It was mentioned that we need to put on the brakes. It would be wonderful if we could put on the brakes for the extinction, or at least the decrease of the number of scrub jays, but that's not something that we can do. So when coming up with some suggestions of what can we do, you know, the first and obvious one would be to say, thank you so much, Malabar, but we're going to clear the land anyway despite the permit. But I, you know, I do have some reservations, being an organization that does issue permits to act in such a Hippocratic manner, though it did cross my mind. My second one was to look at permits that the county has with the city. And apparently, we share individuals who oversee construction, but pulling those individuals away would impact citizens in Malabar that are not involved in this fight. And I think that would be the worst course of action, is to harm those that are not impacted. So I have three recommendations, and one has already been proffered by at least two folks. And the first one was my error. I brought it to the attention of the board, that we could potentially transfer this land over to Malabar. In retrospect, this would be, as pointed out by two of the speakers up here, this would be a terrible idea. And the reason it would be such a terrible idea is, Malabar has a record of terrible conservation. An example would be Cameron Preserve, obtained by Malabar through the Florida Communities Trust grant as part of the agreement. They were required to have a management plan and submitted an annual report. They have not done that, any management or restoration, nor have they submitted annual reports. So to turn it over to Malabar when they have a track record of poor management would be not very wise on this board. I apologize for making that suggestion, and I would ask that we reevaluate that. Second of all, and I agree with Commissioner Pritchett on this, though I don't ever mind my name being brought up. In fact, I kind of enjoy the fact that we're getting under these folks' skin. So I'm not in a position to deny, you know, arrogance, but what I do have is... So I'm not in a position to deny, you know, arrogance, but what I do have is an issue with staff being treated that way. We made decisions as elected officials to get up here, to put our names out there, good or bad. Staff did not do that. And Mr. Knight has handled this. I cannot tell you the times that he said that is inconsistent with science. An individual should not have to do that over and over and over again. So my second one is, we've had public meetings. We've had one, two, three, we've had five public meetings. I'll go over those. So there's talk about this being rushed. That is blatantly false. December 6th, there was a town council meeting. December 9th, the Eels webinar with Public Input Opportunity. December 17th, Eels Selection and Management Committee meeting. December 20th, Town, Greenway, and Trail Committee meeting. And then January 3rd, the town meeting with Eels presentation. Now, there are three coming up. My second suggestion would be to forego this. Mr. Knight does not need to have, does not need to go through that anymore. The information's out there. Everyone has the ability. And folks have had plenty of opportunity, they still have opportunity to contact any of us. But to subject staff to that, I do not think is very fair. So that would be the second one. And here's where the third one comes into play. This comes down to, again, six or eight bikers, one that we have in the audience. I think the best option we have is, and this is terrible, but I can't think of another one, is to put up a fence blocking access to this scrub sanctuary until such a time that Malabar decides that they want to grant the permit. And then charge Malabar for the expense of not only putting that fence up, but then taking it down. The same way that former President Trump said, you know, Mexico should build the wall, or should pay for the wall. I think Malabar, through their absolute mismanagement, their arrogance, and their ability to not understand basic science or offer a counterpoint to that, should have to deal with this, not as a consequence, but for not having to care about the very things that 70% of voters thought that was best management practice. So that being said, the three, the three suggestions I have, very briefly, again, would be to do away with the offer for Malabar to take the land back, as was presented. They don't do a very good job with the land that they currently have. Number two, to accept the five meetings that we've had and forego anymore, allow those citizens to deal with us as individuals instead of subjecting staff to that. And three, block entry using a six-foot-high chain link fence. This would cost roughly $6,100 and be two to three days, and bill Malabar for that expense until such a time that they grant a permit to help the scrub jays. Those are my suggestions. I'd like other ones, but that's the best I could come up with at this juncture, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I don't know if, how many people had the pleasure of listening to that entire meeting. Again, it sparked Commissioner Pritchett's interest based on what the town clerk said because the town clerk knows that it got a little bit off the rails. So without repeating what everybody said, thank you for your patience. Thank you for your, you trying to explain your position, obviously, and your experience. Just a couple of questions, or a couple of, I guess, I already know the answers to, but I want them kind of for the record. Based on, you know, if the scrub jay plan was to move forward, how is it gonna impact the trails? The trails will still be in place, people will still have access to the trails. What are the impacts?
Yeah, all the trails would still be there.
The public would still have access?
Absolutely. The, I mean, there might be some days here and there where we'd have to close a particular trail just because the equipment is working in that area because they can throw a lot of debris, but...
No, but when it's done, what is the impact on the trail, other than the nice shaded area for the people that are gonna be using it?
Right, it would just be the loss of shade.
It would be the landscape, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And also, you know, I'm gonna try to refrain from going back to that meeting, but I think it needs to be said because that audio was early on in the meeting. And it's funny because I actually got, and I'm sure by no error, I think it was a link to the meeting audio because everything goes through the chair that's presented at the meeting. So I got the audio before, but it wasn't the audio that Commissioner Tobias, that he presented this evening. And I had actually written down the audio. So just for the record, and I think that some of Commissioner Tobias's points were because of the words of this Councilman, Steve Rivet. This is basically in response to him directing his town staff to come up with some code revisions to make it miserable for the county to get permits to do that land. I mean, you were at the meeting. I mean, there's no question that that was, because it was discussed at length, correct?
Yes.
And so this is what he said. He said he wants to set this, in other words, he wants to come up with codes for the easiest way for Eels to do, for the easiest way for Eels to do is to come up with an agreement that is mutually acceptable to them, and that any other method is painful, difficult, lengthy, and expensive. So in other words, he was gonna make the Eels program suffer and make the Eels program pay. I think the suggestion was $40 per tree because they were gonna try to equate it to a residential permit. Is that correct?
That's the current rate, yeah.
Yeah. And so they wanted to hurry up and get some code language before we could, and hold all permits until that they have this new code passed. So I mean, that to me is more disturbing than any personal attack, more disturbing than the laughter at the fact that they even talked about this, at holding us hostage, or trying to extort us, I guess, in essence, or obstruct us. And that's possibly a legal question for Abby. I mean, we have a case. You know, if they hold our permit up, they're in violation of what law? I mean, I know we could file a complaint and all that other stuff, but I mean, do we complain to this state? Do we send this audio to the state, this last 10 minutes of the meeting, and maybe some other portions of the meeting, to say, "This is what we're dealing with? We can't even move forward with this project? This is somebody who said throughout the meeting that they wanted to work with us in cooperation." That's the crazy part. Let's work in cooperation, as they laughed about how they were gonna hold us hostage. So that, to me, that's not working in cooperation. It's give us what we want, or this is what we're gonna do. So Abby, what kind of legal remedy would we have if they don't allow us to do the permit, or if they hold the permit so we can't move forward?
So at this time, what they issued was a building permit which has expired. So they were treating this as a building permit. We are, we have been in contact, I think Mike has, with the state. We're looking into whether actually a building permit is really required for this type of land clearing, for our land management, because what they're looking at is a building permit code, like if you're doing construction, obviously, there's requirements there. So we are looking into that as far as whether actually a permit is even required for this. And I mean, at that point, we needed to make that determination if there is another avenue for that. Obviously, there's also the option of preventing access so we could, you know, close the site, as Commissioner Tobias was discussing. Those are a couple of the options we've been looking at, but we were obviously looking for direction from the board.
And I don't wanna get into these childish games with the town, but I don't know if they're gonna hold our permit, then maybe that's the only thing we can do while we hash it out in court. But I don't think it's fair, and I don't think that was the voter's intent for the Eels program. The Eels has a committee. This goes through their committee. It's not like a manager of the program decides what we're gonna do with the property. And you can't half-do this property. And the reason why I brought up the sink area is because this is, you know, I've known Keith for many years, and he's the subject matter expert, as far as I'm concerned, on scrub jays and restoration of population and stuff. And it kind of broke my heart when he told me about how this is kind of where they're going to die, and that's just not, that's not good management. And so my next question for you is, what is our maintenance plan after we clear this? Is there a maintenance plan, and are there funds allocated for that?
Yes, we would just continue the burning plan. Once the trees are down, the burns should continue to take care of it. There might be some periodic mechanical work to be done, but it gets pretty straightforward after the tree canopy is down.
Okay. Because possibly another thing, and it's kind of poking fun back at them, but you know, we could always charge them, surcharge for sheriff services for people that use the trail if they require them, if this, if we're gonna go silly back and forth with the town of Malabar. Hopefully, it doesn't come to that. But to me, it's about landscape and shade, and about an area that looks more beautiful, perhaps, for people that enjoy the recreation. I've always said I wanted people to have access to Eels property. I've been a big fan of the trails, but this does not impact their access, it does not impact their use. It just impacts possibly what kind of afternoon they're gonna have and how much shade they're gonna have. So for me, this is an easy one for me. So I didn't mean to rant, guys, I just got really, I got really impassioned about, you know, not just about the threats that were made, but you know, for a town that wants cooperation and a mutual agreement, and then threatens to hold us hostage, that doesn't sound like somebody who has any interest at all in working with the county. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't think you took too long at all. You were very explicit in what you were saying, and it was impassioned. I, for one, and I think I am not different than a whole lot of other commissioners here, I want to do this yesterday. I think it needs to be done. It should be done. We're charged to do it, and we need to just move forward. And leave it in the hands of the experts to decide what, how many trees need to be taken down, if any. It's your call. And make this the best habitat you can make it for scrub jays. We're charged with that. And as so many people have already said, the scrub jays are disappearing, and even with our best efforts, they could disappear. So we need to do it, just get it done. So whatever this board wants to do, I'm ready to support it.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Okay, Ms. Jordanby, I like what you had mentioned, because this is state property. We're just responsible for maintaining it and taking care of the scrub jays. So my question would be, do we really have to get a permit from them? I mean, this is state property needing to do it. Are we allowed to proceed with this? I mean, what are we looking at if we allow the people that need to take care of the situation? My other part of this question is, if it's not able to do it, are we able to sue Malabar for endangering the scrub jay population and maybe bring suit against them for every bird that dies from them being irresponsible from allowing us to do this process?
So a couple options. So going back to the building permit, they had issued it, it has expired. So at this time, we are under the understanding that they will not issue a permit if we reapply for a new permit. We're looking into, and I was looking into, talking to the state, as far as they think perhaps we may not need a permit to do this type of work, since it's not a construction project. We may not have to get a building permit from the town. So we're looking into that. I don't have that answer as I sit here right now. But as far as the issue of, you know, moving forward without a permit, I mean, obviously, that would be potentially an option, but that would cause perhaps code enforcement from the town if they take the position that we absolutely need this permit. They could take us to court and attempt to get an injunction. So we would have to battle that out at court. So there is a possibility of just moving forward without having that permit, but we'd have to, in the meantime, hopefully find out one way or the other whether we actually be required to have it. And once again, this is state property, so code enforcement liens would be going against state property. I believe that during that discussion that was mentioned to the state, if I'm correct, Mike, when you talked to them, that that would not be an issue for them as far as the lease, if there was code enforcement proceedings? I think you had that discussion.
Yeah, the discussion was that they wouldn't consider it a violation of our lease, because our lease says that we are responsible for municipal permitting, but they say that that is primarily related to development and not to habitat management.
So the other option I was thinking of, and I'd have to look into it, is there is a potential of filing a mandamus to get the town to issue the building permit if we really feel that that is requirement before we do the work? And that was something we'd have to look into. I mean, that's a possibility. I'm not sure really how to tell you one way or the other, whether we would be successful in that. But we are kind of in that catch-22 because we, the land is the state's, we're the management, you know, kind of the property manager. So at this point, we're being frustrated in doing what we need to do for the property.
Are we allowed to maybe file some kind of lawsuit on them for endangering this population by putting this off? Because I imagine the more time we put this off, I mean, they told me the little story about the big birds up there waiting for these little birds and just swoop down and eat them. I imagine the longer we wait, the higher risk is for these birds to disappear and not being able to multiply. So are we able to do that? Because I feel what they've done now is reckless, and that they should be held responsible for endangering this species at this point. Are we allowed to do that?
I would actually ask that, I would have some time to look into that, that option specifically. I think it really does start with the state, if they have anything. Because right now, what I understand as far as state agencies, the building permit would be required. Are we gonna consider this a real building permit, or is it more of land management?
Land management.
Exactly. So I think that'd be the first domino that needs to fall. We need to have that determination and work with the state, and then we can proceed forward as determining what cause of action we may have, whether we actually think we can move forward and just take that step forward, or do we actually need to go to court and file some kind of lawsuit?
Okay, I'm really kind of bothered that none of them showed up here tonight to talk to us about it either, because, you know, you are allowed to have different opinions and you can have a conversation. So the stance that was taken on this with that conversation very much concerns me. Commissioner Tobias, I understand the fence thing. I just don't want to punish the people of Malabar for what their council did. So I'm struggling with that of potentially shutting it off to the population there, but I think we need to take a hard stand on this some way, somehow, so.
I know the argument by one of the residents was that we should be holding town meetings down there in the town of Malabar. We all come from different districts. Malabar is John Tobias's district. We all come to Vieira, and I'm a little shocked that, for being so strongly opinionated, that not a single one of them showed up.
Yeah, me too.
But anyhow. Commissioner Tobias?
I think we need to act relatively quickly. At a minimum, I think that the five meetings is plenty. I don't think we, again, I'd like to take action where we don't subject staff to any more of what they had to go through, and they handled admirably, but I just don't think that that is fair on staff. Number two, it was my error. I hope we can move, make the decision that we don't want to turn this over to Malabar. Again, that was my directive. I got two other folks to support it, so I'd like to rescind that as a second action point. The third one is the fence. I'd like to do it immediately. However, you know, I'm very hesitant to compromise here for a group that is not. But it looks like the town of Malabar likes to cancel a lot of their meetings, so looking forward, the next, they call it a special one, I wonder what's so special about it. But it would be on the 24th of February. Commissioner Pritchett, even though I'd go out there tonight and help put up that fence, and I really would, I would ask that we begin constructing that fence if the permit is not issued by close of business the day after. That town council meeting would be the 25th, which would give them two weeks if they'd wanna hold a special meeting. By all means, they could do that, but at least it would allow them to get to a regular one on the 24th. As well as a fourth option that was just brought up here is to ask the county attorney to look at all options for not needing the permit or taking legal action, as was suggested. So if that meets your approval, the motion would capture all four of those, Madam Chair.
One second. And so that's assuming, obviously, that we require a permit, because in a perfect world, there would be no permit needed, so at least we wouldn't, because obviously, we want something back from the state before, I don't want the state to see us as being combative. I want us to, of course, follow the rules.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias. Was the motion clear, clerks? Okay. A second by Commissioner Pritchett.
I'd like to, can I?
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, would you entertain, in addition to your motion, to ask Abby to reach out to the state as soon as possible tomorrow, for direction and determination if we actually even need a permit and get a written direction from them?
Thank you. I think that's a good idea, that she pursues all avenues available.
Get that out of the way, and then dismiss the necessity of our staff to attend any more of their meetings. That saves them the aggravation of...
I think that's a very good idea, Commissioner Smith.
Okay, second by Commissioner Pritchett? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now they can listen to our meeting and have their feedback.
Thank you, watch. I hope that's...
Yeah. Okay, I have no public comment cards, so we're moving on to board reports.
Okay, I do have one report. I have a request, Commissioners, to modify the current board calendar and ask for a change in the board's schedule to move the board... calendar and ask for a change in the board's schedule to move the board's regular board meeting and tentative millage that is currently scheduled for July 26th at 9:00 a.m., and to move that, because of scheduling conflicts that have come to my attention, to July 19th at 9:00 a.m. So we'd have a regular board meeting and tentative millage on the 19th instead of the 26th of July. So I'd ask the board to entertain that.
Okay, motion to move the July 26th regular meeting and tentative millage meeting to the 19th of July of this year, by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
No report.
Commissioner Pritchett?
No report.
Commissioner Loebre?
Couple things. First, I'd like to ask Commissioner Tabia, he mentioned during the tow rate item, that he was towed a couple of times at college. And I listened to the particular words that people use, that when he says that he was towed a couple of times at college, he didn't say, well, he was attending college as a student, and I'm aware that he is a professor. So I was hoping he might advise as to whether or not he was towed during the time he was there as a student, or towed during the time he was a professor in college.
Statute of limitations exonerates you.
All right. I'll let you off the hook on that one. So a couple other things. First, had a big anniversary last week. Congratulations to the wife, or condolences, I guess, for having dealt with me for that long. I'm going to get you a plaque, not at taxpayer expense, or a medal or something, congratulating you for that, for your tolerance. And now to the meat item here, Driftwood. And I'm just going to put this out there so everyone can relax a little bit. I'm not asking anyone to do anything right now. There's no action that I'm requesting. Instead, I just want to give you all a heads up that our next meeting, which I believe is the 25th, it's a 9:00 a.m. meeting, it's my intention to bring forth an agenda item addressing what staff ought to do with respect to the funds that we still have in escrow from Driftwood. The short version of it is that we had a contract, we had an agreement with Driftwood, that contemplated our receiving a particular proposal and sending that proposal out on the basis of an RFP. That agreement expired on the 31st of this past month. At this point, we're going to have a couple of options that are coming up for us. Either we direct staff to seek to amend that with Driftwood. I don't know. My initial inclination was somewhat skeptical, and having spoken with staff, they share my skepticism, to put it rather bluntly, in that we may not be able to modify it. I think the changes may be too substantial. But we can look at that on this coming meeting. Alternatively, we may simply direct staff to remit the funds back to Driftwood, and then have them come back to us and request essentially a do-over, where we send out for RFP whatever the new proposal is, or whatever the existing proposal is. I will tell folks, though, just so that there's no surprise down the road, I don't want to ambush anyone, and I've told a couple of folks that work with Driftwood, that my inclination is not to shorten the RFP process, this go-around. I understand that time is of the essence, has been uttered a number of times. I'm not saying that they didn't believe it at the time, or that there was any gamesmanship there. But we are where we are. It has been a very long time. I think we go through the process at the regular rate. And the agenda item that I'll be bringing back later in the month will contemplate, if we do enter into a new agreement with Driftwood, that it involve essentially the same terms, in that it's going to be their money funding the study. And instead of having the results of that analysis come back to us for discussion, I'd like staff instead, and this will be in the agenda item, to add it to a TDC agenda, so that TDC will have an opportunity to weigh in and chime in and express whatever concerns, request answers to any questions they may have. And that only at that point, if it survives that process, does it come back to us to review. Realistically, I think this is going to be something where we're talking several months out, at the minimum, before it ever comes back to us. But I just want to put this out there, because there have been a lot of folks, I think, that are chronologically way further down the road than makes any sense at this point with respect to supporting or opposing, or having other feelings with regard to the project. So no action requested tonight, just a heads up, as far as being on the lookout on the 25th to see that agenda item from my office.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple things. Gabriel is new in my office, so warm welcome to him. Second of all, not to hash things in the past, but Billy from my office and Jamison worked hard together on a science fair project with electromagnets and roller coasters, and found out they placed, and so I want to wish those two congratulations. I don't know who is more excited, Billy, or little Jamison, who is Bethany's son, but congratulations. That's pretty amazing. And something to put on your guys' radar, the, and I don't want to take a stand on this one way or another, I just want to let you know, House Joint Resolution 1 was presented. That doubles the homestead exemption to public employees. I would actually fit under that, I believe, because it's classroom teachers, law enforcement, correction officers, firefighters, child welfare. But that would come down on less money and less resources that the county would receive. So just something to be aware of on the first day. Always, you know, we have an interesting role. Pay attention on what goes on top of us, as well as what goes on below us in the whole, in the whole system. But anyway, thank you for you guys' time and consideration when it comes to not only, you know, the Malabar area, but the scrub jays that are there. I appreciate you taking so much time and doing so much research on it.
Commissioner Smith?
I wanted to mention, in case you folks haven't seen or heard TV or newspapers, that starting this Monday, January 17th, Bright Line will begin running trains between, you'll see their brightly colored trains, running between West Palm and Cocoa. Its purpose is to train the conductors and the engineers, so that they learn the tracks, learn the curves, learn the lay of the land. And they'll be doing this, I've been told, they'll be doing this five to seven days a week until the track is ready to go to Cocoa. So you'll be noticing the trains going by, and they won't be going by at 75 to 120 miles an hour. They'll be limited to the speeds of the freight trains, which is about 65 miles an hour. But the project is moving forward. That's all I have.
I have nothing, except I want to say I'm so sorry, Matt Wallace, for Bama's loss, but I am so excited that the Georgia Bulldogs won. So congrats to them on being national champions. And if you've ever had a chance to, like, look into Bennett, his story is pretty inspiring and pretty amazing. And it's just a story of, you know, keep fighting for your dreams and keep, when people tell you, you know, you're going to fail, and that you can't, but he's awesome. So just read about him if you get a chance. And thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
They could make a movie about him.
They will, probably.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.